I don't know.
There's hard copies in this lot, too.
We got hard copies. We're gonna do the best we can. All right, go ahead whenever you're ready, Angie. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City Bet North Committee of the whole meeting. Today is Monday, November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. It's five o'clock PM. Thank you all for joining us. We have a robust group on teams today, some folks out of town, which we understand at this time of year. So tonight, we have three items to appear. We're gonna take up the first two. Then I'm gonna move the consent agenda item for Mr. Schmidt to tackle Consent G after Items to Appear nine. That way, we don't have to switch back and forth. And then we'll have our Police Chief Doug Scott tackle Items to Appear number ten. So we start with Items eight and nine. These are for our Public Works Director Brian Schmidt and City Engineer Brent Morlock to tackle. Gentlemen, you have the floor. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. All right, I will I will tackle the first two. We've got a couple of contract amendments, and then Brian and I will kind of tag-team the private roads, the consent agenda item. First item we have is a resolution approving an amendment with Bray Architects for final design of our new police station after a very successful referendum. If you remember, our initial contract with Bray just included basically feasibility work and some very preliminary design work, enough that we could put together a floor plan, which we feel very good about, the work that was done there, and then do the cost estimating and some of the referendum support that they provided. Now that we have the ability to go ahead, we wanna hit the ground running. So what we have up on the screens, but what you have a hard copy of as well, is our preliminary design schedule that was put together by Bray. So if we get right here the first step in mid-November, if we get authorization tomorrow night, they will move right into, right into full design. We got it there. Okay. So building design is generally put together in three major stages: schematic design, design development, and construction documents. We are sitting before the start of any of those. Like I said, just very preliminary work. We'll jump right into schematic design that is anticipated to take about three months. You're gonna look at some additional tweaks to the floor plan if we need to. You can see down on the bottom side of your graphic here. You know, we don't expect the footprint to change much, but if you start moving walls, there are things that may require a foot here or there. The building massing, that's the exterior of what you're gonna be looking at. Circulations, hallways, door placement, things like that. And then the exterior design. And then beyond schematic design, then we go into design development. That's really where you're getting your real true design starting to put together. You're really phasing out of the preliminary and moving into final. That's also about a three-month stretch. So at that point, we would be looking at April roughly of two thousand and twenty-six. You can see on there engineer engagement. That's where your structural engineers are gonna come on, your civil engineers, your HVAC, you know, all of your MEP engineers. They'll all be, we already know who those folks are. It's IMEG that's really gonna provide ninety-five percent of the services. There may be a couple specialty ones that may need to get brought in, but IMEG is the main subcontractor to Bray. That's where you get into some of the fun stuff. That's where the material selections really start to see what the building's gonna look like. And then construction documents. You're not really changing much. You're just detailing out every inch of that building to be able to prepare to put that out to bids. The intent would be, at this point, would be roughly August of next year. You're probably looking at staggered bid packages. So if possible, if the designs align, we would potentially have an early release bid package that would be for any long-lead items such as generators, electric switchgear, things like that, that once you have that identified, if we know that's gonna be a thirty-to-fifty-week acquisition, we hope we don't have any of those, but you could. You put out bid packages for those. And then to really take advantage of time of year, if this schedule is able to hold true, we would most likely look at an early foundation package. So that way, we could get those foundations in the ground, get up out of the ground before winter, and really be able to work all winter then at that point. The contract amendment in front of you is a continuation of the AIA agreement that we approved over a year ago. That initial agreement was really, you know, master agreement, I think, if I could put it that way. It laid out all the provisions, just required additional approvals, executions, to move from certain phases to the subsequent one. So the fee percentage, so architects work off a percentage of the cost of work is the term that's used in their contract. That range was already set by the initial agreement that you approved. They had a range depending on the the cost of the work, so there might have been a five-to-ten million, ten-to-fifteen, and then there was a twenty-to-thirty million dollar. So we will fall in that twenty-to-thirty million dollar range, which is five-point-seven-five percent of the cost of work. Now, right now, with where we're at, we are estimating the actual cost of work. So now, we're not talking cost of project, because we know the project cannot exceed twenty-seven million, and that's all in. That's every single expense that we have. So that's engineering fees, architecture fees, construction manager, furniture, any other owner, owner-born or owner-provided costs, so utility hookups, things like that. That all has to fall into that less-than-twenty-seven-million-dollar number. We're estimating that the actual cost of construction for the Bray-controlled items is right now between twenty-two and a half and twenty-four million dollars. That does include some contingencies, obviously, because of where we're at in design, that we are so preliminary. They need this amendment to begin that work. So we're gonna use that upper end of that limit, a twenty-four-million-dollar not to exceed, to get them started, so we can issue a purchase order. I do wanna be very clear about the fact that we will come back once the guaranteed maximum price. So if you remember, when we hired Estes, the new law that the state allows us to do with the construction manager at risk, the real big benefit to that besides just the expertise of a construction manager is that we'll set a GMP, a Guaranteed Maximum Price. So once that price is established, we will come back and we will amend this agreement again to have a hard cap on the on the Bray fees. So that GMP, let's say that falls at twenty-three million or twenty-three million one hundred and seventy-five thousand, whatever that number is, we'll come back and amend that PO so there is a hard and fast limit. Bray is probably not gonna incur more than seventy-to-seventy-five percent of their fees before that's established, because they've got a lot of work to be done during construction. So there's no concern of hitting that upper limit by the time you come back and amend that, if that concern was was present. Beyond that, we're all very excited to get started. Is there anything, Jeff, Jason, Brian, you wanted to add from the CPT?
I can add a little bit about the tentative plan for the bond sale. As you know, we'll be selling bonds for our general CIP here come February to be issued then in March. We'd like to make the first portion of these bonds a part of that sale. We always have a better experience when we combine as, when we can combine as many issues into one sale as possible. We don't, we minimize issuance costs, lots of benefits. So we would probably anticipate not issuing all twenties or all twenty-seven million if it were that much right up front. We'll probably do something in the neighborhood of maybe twenty million. And that way, we're within our spend-down requirements on the tax exemption of the bonds as well. And then come next February, when we're, you know, have a much better idea of how much the completed project will cost, we'll finish it out and issue the rest of the bonds at that time.
Thank you. Finance Director Shat. Any questions? Yes. Greg A.
Thank you, sir. Who decides? I assume that the expenses are gonna be coded to a certain code to, for the project, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, so there's a project number that will track everything.
Who decides? What to code it to? Is that, is that the Ark? Is that us? I'm not saying this right. Okay, let's say we have a drive, we have to put in another driveway to Devil's Glen, as an example. Does that road get charged to the project, or is that something different? As an example.
Yeah, I don't anticipate any expenditures that would not be part of the project. So driveways, parking lot replacements, a traffic signal at Crow Creek Road and Devil's Glen, that's all gonna be part of the project because the project is driving that improvement.
But who would, let's say for the sake of argument that you don't wanna charge the light to the project. Who decides what to charge to what?
I think if we were making an assumption to not charge something, I think we would need to bring that back to council for that decision. Yeah, otherwise, the intent is the twenty-seven million covers every improvement.
Okay.
Because then that would be, you know, potentially trying to fund it using another source.
Yes, we have to be careful.
That we would be looking at.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Greg J.
Just on that, I think, sort of a roundabout thing, there was some concerns raised during goal-setting about allocation of costs as it related to the landing, swimming pool and ice rink. And so I think Greg wanted to get a better understanding of who decides what bill gets coded to what part of a project, so that when he reviews those bills, which I understand he's gonna do at some point, he'll have an understanding of how it works without sounding accusatory in that project, just to try and get a better understanding of how it works. I think that's where the question is.
Sure. I think the difference between this project was the fact that we're paying for everything here. At the landing, that was staff. So as we coded bills, we broke it out between the pool number and the ice number. That won't be the case here. There's one project number. All expenditures go to that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. Other questions? If you are online and want to ask a question, just unmute. Otherwise, we'll assume you're good. Jerry is the only one that's there. Okay, this is on, excuse me, an item to appear as number eight tomorrow night, so we'll take that up. Let's move to item number nine for the same team.
Did you need a motion on that or not?
Nope, not on items to appear, but consent.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
All right, yes, so our second amendment.
It's not me, Michelle and Decker, is it?
It is. I'm already overwhelmed.
Our second amendment would be the the last contract to bring forward for the gateway pedestrian, bridge and trails project. If you remember, we talked about in August when we approved the construction contract with Kramer and Associates, that we still had a construction, observation and engineering contract with HDR and some of their subcontractors that we need due to the specialty of this of this project. Sorry, keep that moving. So we do have that number now. The original estimate that I had estimated back then was was five-hundred-thousand dollars. You know, we did our best to try to estimate that. We are, we have never built a structure like that. Nobody in the Quad Cities has. We've only had a few in the state of Iowa, so, you know, the the specialty nature of, say, the the wind engineer that has to come in and make sure that the arch is not creating a vibration or having wind issues, the foundation inspections that were done, the up-in-the-air inspections that we would love to be able to do with our own staff to save money is just not something that we're qualified to do. So that's the agreement here. The amendment in front of you is a total of five-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand-two-seventy-five, so it is slightly over the five-hundred-thousand. What I have, let me switch sheets here, that are provided in front of you. This is the same spreadsheet that we went over when we approved the Kramer and Associates contract showing the reductions in the IAD and Middle Road corridor, if I could say that, as we had talked about to do some cuts there and cost savings. We've realized some additional savings out there. So I wanted to bring that forward as an updated number here. That does include the roughly thirty-seven-thousand dollars in overage that we do have above the fourteen-point-five million for the total project cost. I do still anticipate that we're gonna be under that fourteen-point-five million number. We are making incredible progress. Our contractor has brought, at this point, three crews onsite. And if you've been out there, they are really hammering away. The contingency amount that we approve with the project, really wanted to make sure that hopefully we would not need to dip into that for the substructure work. So the work we're doing right now, where we're pile, driving steel piles into the ground for the foundation. You've seen, probably if you've driven by and happened to catch it, seen those steel piles hanging in the air. We are experiencing some really improved soil conditions over what we were expecting. We know the, probably the upper level of the soil surfaces out there are not great for building roads sometimes, but it turns out that the soil surfaces in this sixty-to-ninety-foot range are really good for building bridges. We're saving a lot of steel piles so far. I'm estimating somewhere between forty and seventy thousand dollars that we're gonna see in savings. By the time this is done, we've been able to reuse a lot of the cutoff spoil material that's out there. Gonna be able to ship back a lot of that steel pile. Contractor's probably two weeks ahead of their six weeks of working at this point already. We've already got a one vertical column placed, so they're really making great progress. So none of those savings are reflected in here. What has been updated from what we saw in August are hard bid numbers that we got from the IAD and Middle Road bid. So if you remember, there are kind of three big buckets that we were looking at trying to reducing costs there. So we did reduce the rec-trail extension, the limits of that we reduced to stop just at that north center ramp, so that way at least we had the rec-trail all the way done through the interstate, never had to worry about clearances or trying to build under the bridge to extend that in the future. That pricing actually came in a little over what the DOT estimated. So those savings are roughly a hundred-and-sixty-seven, a hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollars right now. The street lighting came in well under, so you'll see the savings there. We had not anticipated any significant savings through that, and we're at almost three-hundred-thousand dollars under what was estimated there. Really great numbers from the electrical all the way around. Sanitary sewer came in a little under. We've reduced the streetscaping with the removal of that proposed monument sign. There was a little decorative bench and light fixture that we had talked about that had some kind of anomaly, I would say, in the pricing in there. So, you know, forty thousand dollars versus eight thousand dollars. So there was some money in there, so we removed that. And then you would have the final inspection contract that would be in front of you. So we're proposing that when we come to CIP discussions here in a week, actually, that that number will come down even more than what we had. So we originally had a two-million-dollar budget. We're proposing the half-million-dollar reduction. I think we can get another hundred-and-fifty thousand out of it right now. I'd still like to leave a little bit in there, just in case something comes up on the bridge. But right now, I feel, I do feel really comfortable with the contingency amount that we have and how construction's been going. With that, I'd ask you any other questions on this?
Questions here? Jerry?
Yes, I have a question. With multiple contracts, do we have clauses in there to make sure that if there is a problem, the city's not left holding the bag? For example, if there's a problem with a vibration, and the wind engineer says, oh, it's not my problem, and it's probably a HDR problem. And HDR says, oh, it's not my problem, it's poor construction. And we end up with a bunch of finger pointing, and the city ends up holding the bag. Do we have clauses in these multiple contracts to make sure that doesn't happen?
We do. In terms of just the professional engineering contracts, everything falls under HDR. So the amendment's with them, so any dispute would be between them and their subcontractors. And then I guess, Chris, in terms of a construction versus engineering concern?
Yeah, it was, it's a good question, Jerry. You know, finger pointing is always common in complex litigation, but what I can say is that our contracts make the party responsible for the work, responsible for any issues that may arise. So the city will not be left holding the bag. Whoever is responsible will be responsible to fix whatever issue may occur. Hopefully, that doesn't happen here, but I think we're well protected if it does.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, we'll leave this on tomorrow night's agenda as item to appear number nine. Let's move to Consent Item G. This is for our Public Works Director and our City Engineer. Mr. Schmidt, Mr. Morlock, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor. What you have in front of you for Consent Item G is a resolution receiving and filing a letter of intent for the residents that live on Pleasant Ridge Court. What they're seeking is full transfer of their private road to a city road. Just give you a little bit of brief history here. So I started here in March of twelve. Back in August of two thousand and thirteen, the residents back then filed a petition to have the city take over the ownership of this private road. Staff prepared a report and was, that report was presented to the City Council on November twenty-first of two thousand and twenty-three. Bottom line is that it came down to that the costs were too expensive for the residents to take on for full transfership of that road. We did not have a policy in place at that time like we do now, where we have the option for a betterment program. So back in October of twenty-six, or excuse me, twenty-sixteen, we actually had the policy that you have in your packets that that was approved by council that gave the two options. Then there was another petition filed by City, to City Council back in November of sixteen to convert the public street back again. Once again, staff prepared a really good report, brought it in front of council. We came in and they determined that the costs were too expensive for them to move forward. Then you go back to October of twenty-four, they came back again, and they were wanting to use Option B, which is the betterment program. That's where this particular road has sections of concrete, asphalt and seal coat throughout the whole corridor. So what they did was staff prepared a report, listing the options of the cost for them. And once again, they came back and said the costs were too expensive for them to move forward. What you have tonight is a, like I said, a letter of intent to move forward with full ownership again. And that's kind of where we're at, and I'll turn it over to Brett, because he's had conversations with the owners on there. And we also had a meeting with the property owners here at City Hall and discussed the project itself and potential options moving forward. They were all in agreement to what we discussed, and that's when you have a signed letter of intent in front of you.
Yeah, I know we've talked to you all a few times on this, as Brian has showed. It's quite a history with this neighborhood. The policy as approved, we have not had any luck with any neighborhood being able to to follow through on this. I think I've done five or six feasibility reports, and none have moved forward. So when Mr. Beck and his neighbors came back to us, and I believe reached out to a few of the council members, the discussion was had, could we look at some deviations from the policy? So in talking with Decker, what we looked at was to leave the pavement widths the same, pavement materials the same, just improve them individually. So I guess that's a little confusing, but this graphic might help a little bit. So for example, the green area, as you see coming up here, is a seal coat area. Then you transition to concrete. I believe there's an asphalt section here, then concrete, concrete. Varying widths, varying conditions. So we looked at them all individually and really put together a compilation of what could we do to bring all those sections up to, I would say, city standard condition, not city standard width. That, that, I would say, probably every one of the previous ones that have failed, that was the kicker. It was cost, but it was also sometimes physical constraints of being able to fit a thirty-one-foot street where you have a twenty-foot street or a twenty-four-foot street. You know, some of these are are pretty narrow. This first section's only twelve-foot wide. It's a single lane in and out of there. That has a restriction at the south end, because the bridge that's there is only one lane. So it wouldn't make a lot of sense to make them widen that out to thirty-one foot if you've got to condense to a ten-or-twelve-foot bridge crossing. So this, this report that's in there, I wanted you guys to get a first look at it. The letter of intent was something that we brought forward with one of the previous cases. They did not make it past that step. But I would kind of compare this to the situation that we've gone through, the speed humps recently, and what we talked about with the the traffic calming policy was it's one more step to make sure that the residents truly are on board with this before we bring it to you. We wanna make sure that it's not a hundred percent binding, but it really expresses their intent to want to bring this to a full consideration by City Council. So no action. We would anticipate, you know, whether this is looked at at a work session sometime soon, or if we just wanna do it at a cowl, that we would come back and actually walk you through the full report, go over the costs, and then have a full discussion, because like I said, there are deviations in this particular case compared to what we have seen in the past.
Questions?
I would, I would chime in as well. We've had several of the private road in, interest by folks that live on those, none of which can meet our current single-lane street of, say, twenty-seven minimum width. These are probably alley profiles at best, serving a very small area generally. I don't think there's more than maybe sixteen homes here.
Thirteen, I think, yeah.
And there's a couple of other ones that are less than that, five homes maybe. And there's just no way that we can make the standard street work. But we, we have some feeling that if these were built more to an alley profile, you would probably get some acceptance. And of course, with that, the costs are a lot less. And so we think there's an opportunity to consider a change in the policy. And that's what we said to the folks here was, we would certainly visit with council about a change in the policy, but you have to tell us you're willing to step forward, and if we change that policy that you're in. Otherwise, we're just going through an exercise in futility. So we think there's some merit to consideration of it. We told them to go get all their signatures. If they got them, we would sit down with the council and talk about why we think the policy ought to consider changing. They understand if they were to be brought in, they would likely go into an unfunded category. And they, we would have to bring them into the CIP when the council thought it was necessary, and when we had funding available. They understand that. So we were, we weren't, there was no myopic. Everybody walked in here with their eyes wide open. And we felt the best thing to do was to have them provide this letter of intent, that they would be willing to move forward if we would consider a change in the policy. So that's what, that's what we've directed them to do, and they've come back and started that process.
All we're doing is accepting and filing the residents.
That's all we're doing.
Okay. Questions at this point? Yes, Greg J.
Thank you, Your Honor. First off, Mr. Beck was probably the first person who contacted me upon my election. This was something that was very important to him. And he went through the history and said that people simply weren't going to or couldn't afford to pay the cost share under the existing policy. I appreciate the fact that staff has been working on this to try and figure out a way to make it work. I will be very interested to see what changes need to be made to the policy in order to make this work, because I do think that there, as Decker says, there are other subdivisions in private roads that may want to take advantage of whatever the revisions are. And I'll just trust staff to prepare the appropriate documents at the appropriate time. Without reviewing the policy in detail, I think there was something in it that said that the cost share gets placed into the CIP in year three or year four. So as we go forward with that, in my head, that's about where it's coming in at. Given my long history of discussion about debt in the city, I would very much be interested in staff considering this as an in lieu of project, as opposed to an in addition project to our CIP budget, so that I can see when this goes in, what's, what would have to come out to keep within reasonable limits, or whether the council decides that this would need to be an addition to existing projects. But that's, that's information that I would like, but I know it's for another day. I just wanted to say thank you to staff for being responsive to the residents.
Thank you. Greg A.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess my first, first question is, is it possible that this situation would ever occur now?
No. No, so we, the few options that we do have for a private street, it is required to, and at this point, I don't see why anyone, we've made it so onerous that no one should want to take that on, because you are still building it to a city standard thirty-one-foot street. We are inspecting it. There's very few positives for anyone to try to build a private street at this point.
And they, they're, are they all on, these thirteen homes, are they all on septic?
Not in this case, no. There's only one, I think, remaining. And there's no way for that one to be served because of the remote nature of it.
But everybody else is on sanitary now. And then what, what services do we provide to that neighborhood? Do we pick up?
Well, we obviously, we have solid waste services and then obviously police and fire.
Right, but that, you know, I've been on this council a long time. That bridge was initially That bridge was initially, at some point over the last sixteen was an issue as far as could a garbage truck go over the bridge? Could a fire truck go over the bridge? Is the bridge improved enough to?
Yeah, the city did a cost share, I believe, with the neighbors. I think it was in twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve or somewhere. And did replace that. It was, however, replaced, like I said, with a one-lane bridge, but it is structurally suspended.
It'll hold the weight.
Yes.
And my last question would be, let's say that the, the cost is a hundred and thirty thousand dollars and, and there's thirteen properties. Do they, they have to come up with the money or is it a lien?
They could do, the option was that they could, they would obviously pay half of whatever the construction cost would be. And then they could obviously pay a portion of that or all of it or just, we were kind of contemplating over a ten-year period based off of the interest would be on, based on the recent bond sale, but it would be assessed over a ten-year period on their property taxes.
But in the meantime, the city's borrowing the money to pay for this project.
Yeah, we would upfront the cost as part of a construction project. And we did give the, the owners the choice that, you know, in this particular case, there's a couple of homes that probably aren't provided as much benefit because they actually live off a little private shared driveway.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's between the thirteen owners, but if there were a few that said, hey, we're only going to pay half, okay? Well, then the rest of the homeowners have to make up that dollar amount. So the total amount has to be met. I think we actually got to the point with the Elk Drive folks where this letter of intent, we added dollars to it to confirm what every property owner was anticipating to pay because they had some, some cost shares going on amongst themselves as long as the total amount was there.
Realistically, not all those people are going to have twenty thousand or thirty thousand to pay. We're going to, we're going to be funding it.
Yep, so that's where the voluntary assessment would be a possibility.
Thank you, thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. Frank?
Thank you, Your Honor. I go back about as far on this as Brian does. And as I remember it, the last time when you worked up a cost share for them, they did not get all thirteen to agree on it. And the reason being, the two that live up on that private drive didn't feel like they were obligated to that much. Are they all on board now?
They all are on board. When we met with them, they have the signatures in front of you. They're, they're all willing to participate. Obviously, the next step would be to create a more detailed report with an estimated cost share. They just, we just wanted to kind of file and receive this now, allow us to prepare this report for you guys, and then we can discuss it further on the steps moving forward. It's just important to note that this is a deviation from our existing policy. And then we do also have three different types of material surfaces in there. We have asphalt, seal coat, and concrete through this whole corridor.
Yeah, the, the costs are actually in the report, so it is a finalized report. We were able to redo that pretty quickly based on the three previous ones we've done. But the costs have dropped from, I want to say it was about four hundred and fifty to four and seventy-five thousand total, down to about a hundred and fifty thousand. And being able to put these improvements into existing city programs would be how we would do it. There are no long stretches that require reconstruction. So the, you probably would not see a standalone project in the CIP, for example. You wouldn't see a Pleasant Ridge reconstruction. You would see a portion of it under a resurfacing program, a portion of it under a patch program, and, you know, maybe a small portion under a seal coat program or something. But that's the difference here because you don't have a single material type. So they would, whenever it would happen, if, if this was to move forward, they would be brought into our overall programs.
And it was important to note that the reason why there was such a cost difference from the initial estimate was because we were suggesting a twenty-seven-foot-wide concrete curb and gutter street with storm sewer, which gets obviously very expensive. Or the option was a concrete curb and gutter with a full-depth asphalt section. Once again, being twenty-seven foot wide with sidewalks, and sidewalks just don't exist there. And I think it would be a challenge to even add them topographically on this cross-section, looking at some of the grades that you can see on the road profiles.
Any other questions? It might be helpful for us to know during our consideration of the request, what your thoughts are, Brett and Brian, on the life cycle of these three different repairs we're going to make? Is this a five-year Band-Aid, a ten-year Band-Aid?
They would all be, we wouldn't put Band-Aids on them. They would all be, you know, full-debt patch will give you fifty years on, on the patch. Asphalt overlay is going to be a twenty-five-year. It's really just those two. We were going to convert the seal coat asphalt as well.
And then we have the bridge structure, which has been updated, but.
That one's actually already ours. There is city right-of-way for that bridge structure.
Yeah, from Belmont all the way down to just right, the bridge itself is right-of-way.
That was done whenever that improvement was, was added, twenty-eleven, so.
Just going to be ours to take care of in the future. And as soon as, you know, in five years, they're going to be coming in saying, hey, you got to redo this, you got to redo that. So those kinds of thoughts from you in terms of longevity might be helpful to council making decisions when we get that far.
You got it.
Thanks, sir. Anything else on consent?
Yeah.
G. All right, then I'd like to entertain a motion that this consent item remain on tomorrow night's agenda. All those in favor? Any opposed? We'll take it up as consent G. Let's move to items to appear number ten. This is for our police chief, Doug Scott. Chief Scott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think council's aware that the police department's in kind of a constant state of hiring. We are not unique in this. This is not only a nationwide trend, but a Quad City local trend. It's been ongoing for quite some time. We currently have three openings. Last council meeting, you approved a civil service list of two. One of those took a job with another agency. In the meantime, we still anticipate additional hirings to occur in the near future due to retirements. Yesterday was another officer's last day that was unanticipated, so it's quite the candidate market. We anticipate there's more than sixty local law enforcement jobs in the Quad City area alone that are, that are available. Internally, we've changed our background check and our solution to that by purchasing Guardian Alliance that helps us perform our background software, helps automate some of those features, helps curate and look for different things to bring to our attention to ensure that we're doing nice thorough background checks and help alleviate some of the time that's a manpower resource. We've clarified our disqualifiers to clean up some of the applicants that weren't meeting the expectations on the front end. We have opened up some of our qualifications to include trade schools as an experience. We've continued to work within our process to try to hire the best that we can. And we found that in 2024 legislative session, civil service for hiring with council approval can be suspended for just the hiring portion. And that's what this is, conversation is about, and that's kind of our request to council. While it would still afford the candidates all civil service protections and would only stay open for us for one year, up to one year, it would expire. We believe that that would help us in our process to be nimble, help us in our process to be able to hire quickly, to be able to continue to have a continuous, open process. For example, we had an officer leave three months ago for a personal matter. He didn't go to another law enforcement agency. He just left for some person, personal matters. He just called this week and would like to come back. Under the law, we can hire him back, but within our process, it would be a three-month endeavor. So we could have an opportunity here to bring him back on. He had been on the department for two years. We had invested in him, brought his training up to, up to speed. It would be a great opportunity for us, and we believe that this would afford us that opportunity. We're committed to, you know, following the law and maintaining our thoroughness and trying to hire the best candidates that we possibly can. We don't feel like there will be anything that will be jeopardized in this. We just believe it will give us the opportunity to be slightly more nimble and be able to maintain our process to be open so we can continue to bring in applicants and meet all applicants kind of where they are instead of where we are because it's really a candidate's market.
Thank you, sir. Councilor Curran, what are your thoughts specifically with regard to the law? Obviously, I've looked at it, you've looked at it, and I think chief is right on point. But we also want your blessing.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Yes, as, as Chief Scott indicated, section twelve A of chapter four hundred was put in place to address this issue. It is limited in duration, is limited in scope. It only applies to the certification of a hiring list. It does not apply to promotions. It does not apply to discipline. It does seem consistent with the legislative intent of the, the law. And now, you know, staff is, Doug has looked at this, Kathleen has looked at it. We do believe that there's a need, but now it's up to council to decide whether or not the suspension of this limited aspect of civil service is appropriate.
Have we had the opportunity to discuss this with civil service?
We have.
What was their response?
They, they understood the, the market and they understood that, that the process that they are part of, you know, under this new law can be suspended for this limited purpose is for one position in the police department, the police officer position. So they will still be there for promotional lists, for hiring lists on every other civil service department or position. So I think they, they understood.
They've been at it quite a lot lately. A little break might be okay.
That's right.
Okay. Mr. Plaine, did you have anything to add?
I do not, Your Honor.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? Okay, well, then I'd like to entertain a motion that this remain on tomorrow night's consent agenda as consent G. Wait a minute, I misspoke. I got myself out of line. This is items to appear ten, so we're fine. We're going to move to another consent agenda item, and I saw Jason getting himself ready here, our finance director. Go to page two, we're going to look at consent item B. This is for our finance director, Jason Chat, as are the next three after that. So Jason, you have B, C, D, and E. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. As the agenda indicates, we're to the time of the year where you're going to see an awful lot of me at this table. Tonight, we have four items, all backwards-looking, three of them back to the end of fiscal year twenty-five that ended June thirtieth. And it was just recently audited, and that audit is complete, and there will be a report on that next month. But these are three state reports that are required to be submitted to the state by December first of each year. The first of those reports is the annual urban renewal report. This is not a, a report that needs to be approved by a council, but does need to be, I'm sorry, this report does need to be approved by council. The other two don't. This report needs to be approved by council prior to our submission to the state. It is a twelve-month summary of our urban renewal activities across thirteen active TIF districts throughout the city. So you'll see in the report all TIF revenue, TIF rebate expenditures, TIF debt service expenditures, which we have a, one issue of. In total, last fiscal year, we brought in about three point six million dollars in TIF revenue. Just over three million of that was allocated to rebates. Another four hundred and seventy-four thousand was allocated to principal and interest payments on a capital loan note that we issued back in 2017 for phase one of the sports complex development. TIF funds ended the, the year with a fund balance of about six hundred and forty thousand dollars. But again, that revenue and that fund balance is restricted to be used for those economic development purposes outlined in those urban renewal areas and TIF districts. So that's not necessarily spendable fund balance in any way. But I did want to walk you very quickly kind of through the urban renewal report. It is not a very aesthetically pleasing report, so I'll just kind of walk you through the summary page. That very first page of the report is a summary of all TIF districts and urban renewal areas. Some of those listed are not active anymore. But for the most part, what you see there is our active TIF districts. Again, about three point six million in revenue. You see in the middle of the page, those same numbers, about three point five two five in expenditures. And here's your fund balance. The one note I will make on this page, oops, is this year-end outstanding TIF obligations net of TIF fund balance of sixty-two point eight million dollars. So what that is, is we take a look at all of our existing TIF valuations, and as you know, most of them are rebates, which are based on valuation. They're based on levy rates and then any legislation that might change over time. So we, we do our best to estimate if we pay out all of those rebates as expected, what is that total payout? And that's what you see here, sixty-two point eight million dollars, and that's through 2045. So quite a long period of time. There's a lot of opportunity for things to change, so don't hold us to that number, but that's our best estimate as of June thirtieth of 2025. And if there's no questions on the urban renewal report, I will move on to the annual street finance report.
Questions on the urban renewal? Yes, Greg J.
Jason, I just had a little trouble reading through it. Are there funds that are currently restricted for LMI or no?
No, we don't have any of those.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions here? All right, let's entertain a motion that consent B remain, remain as a consent item for tomorrow night.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Did Jerry have a question?
Nope, he voted.
Okay.
I think. Consent C.
Consent C is our annual street finance report. This is a report of our, the activities of the road use fund mainly, and, and then any other street maintenance, street repair type of expenditures. This is a report that we have to make to the DOT every December first. This is not a report that needs council approval, but does need to be received and filed and noted in the meeting minutes of a council meeting, so that's why we put it on the agenda tonight. Very simply, this report's a little bit easier to understand, a little bit more straightforward as you work through it. You have a report of expenditures by fund type. Obviously, most of those, most of our street expenditures are within the road use fund, this column right here. As you work through, you'll see revenues, loans, and this is only those bonds and loans related to street construction or street repair. And then they even ask for what equipment do you own that you use for these purposes? So we have that listing available. Major street projects for the year ended June thirtieth, 2025. And then the summary page. So we'll add, upon the conclusion of tomorrow night's meeting, we'll add that resolution number and execution date and submit this report no later than December first.
Questions on consent C? Greg A.
Are we seeing a decrease in that income of use tax because of electric cars? Is there, is anybody working on?
I don't know that we've been able to identify that as a driver. I'm sure it probably is.
They're not paying gas tax.
Right. Yep, this is paid at the pump, the Tencent tax on, on every gallon of gas. I don't know that that data exists. The revenue to the fund has certainly slowed, but I don't know that we can point to only electric vehicles for that.
Okay.
So.
Just nosy, thank you.
Yeah, certainly something to keep an eye on.
And out in the future, yeah.
Yeah.
Other questions? Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion that consent C remain on consent for consideration tomorrow night.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right. Let's go to consent B, D, excuse me, as in dog.
All right, and this is the final report that we will submit to the state. This one goes to the state auditor's office again by December first of each year. This is our annual financial report. So this is the, the detailed summary of the financial year that began July first of 2024 and ended June thirtieth, 2025. This is a requirement of the state again. This report details revenue, expenditures, fund balances, outstanding obligations, which is new this year, and budget to actual information as of June thirtieth, 2025. So we've been able to add our audited financial numbers to this report. It should jive very nicely with the audit report you see next month. Fund balances in the governmental funds ended the year totaling about fifty-three million with about fifteen million of that unassigned. Unassigned fund balances means it's not already encumbered or committed, and council has discretion in how that fund balance can be used. The remainder is non-spendable, assigned, or restricted. This is largely those funds in the road use fund, which is a special revenue fund, and then the capital projects funds, which are obviously largely bonded funds. then the capital projects funds, which are obviously largely bonded funds. As I noted, for the first time, this report requires a detailed review and summary review of outstanding long-term debt. I'll show you that here in a second. The city ended the year with $141 million of general obligation debt outstanding. That's about 48% of the state's debt limit for municipalities. There is an additional $22 million in revenue debt largely related to sanitary sewer projects. And I'll just kind of give you a quick walk around of the AFR. It's pretty financy, if I can use that term. But I would point to the very first page is a very good summary. You have, going down the page, revenues, expenditures, and fund balances. Moving across, we start with governmental funds, so mainly those funds funded largely by taxes. And then proprietary funds, which are our enterprise funds, like our sewer utilities, storm water, solid waste, et cetera. Then you'll see a totals column, the total of those two fund types versus the final column, which is the budget column. All of our state mandated service areas ended the year within budget, so we're within budget compliance there. And then I'll just kind of give you a tour of the report. As you go through the pages, you'll start with the revenue. This is a little bit more detailed now than on the first page. You'll see revenue by source, property taxes, other city taxes, and then you'll see it by those fund types. General, special revenue, TIF debt, and capital are all governmental funds, then proprietary funds to the right. A few pages later, we get into expenditures. Those are set out by those state mandated service areas and then provided in a little bit more detail. We go to a fund balance page, you can see those total fund balances and unassigned fund balances by fund type. And... Looks like all I have to show you. I thought I had a, let me go down a page. I'm going to show you the debt section, just you, here it is. The final pages of the AFR are debt in detail, so this is every single issue of debt that we have. Tells you when it was issued, how much was issued, how much remains, how much we paid last year, and a general idea of what it was, what that debt was issued for. So some interesting reading there, if that suits you. That is everything I have on the AFR for FY '25.
Questions for Jason on Consent D? Yes, Greg J.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just very quickly on the amounts set aside for debt. My understanding was that for reporting purposes and the accounting standards, we're including such things as maintenance contracts for software, for IT products, that kind of thing. Do those costs that are shown as debt in our annual report, are they reflected in any of these numbers?
They are not. The law is gray on this matter. However, I have seen advice that the short-term type debt deals are not a part of, your long-term debt reporting, which you see here, are not a part of the general obligation debt that would be a part of the debt margin calculation, the percentage of that state limit that we issue. So those are not reported here.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, Your Honor.
Anything else on this one? All right, then I'd like to entertain a motion that Consent D remain on our consent agenda for consideration tomorrow night.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll take it up tomorrow night. Let's move to Consent Item E.
This is an interesting time of year for the finance department because we're typically working in three different fiscal years at the same time. So now I want to fast forward you out of fiscal year '25, and we'll move into fiscal year '26, the current fiscal year. I'm getting you caught up with our monthly financial summaries, summary reports, which we like to provide on a monthly basis, but it's always a little dicey to close out one fiscal year and start another. So we're a little bit behind on these, but I have the monthly reports for July, August, and September included in this week's packet. Our plan is to report you on the October performance at the first meeting in December, so we're about, we'll get you that report about a month after the close of October. But I would prefer, or caveat that it would still be preliminary at that point. Because of our accrual accounting there, you know, we will be accruing expenditures and revenues that properly belong in October, back to October, probably even after we give you that report. So I think these reports should be viewed as kind of an indicator of where we're at in the fiscal year, but maybe not a final, final number. So real quickly, I'll just jump right into September. We're about 25% of the way through the fiscal year at the end of September. To date, we brought in about 28% of the budgeted revenue. That's not a surprise, as most of the revenue we brought in so far is property taxes, and that's only paid in September, October, and then March, April times. So being ahead of schedule on property taxes is no surprise, and that really kind of pulled up our average to the 28% number. On the expenditure side of the ledger, we've spent about 17% of budget. If you look at each service area, you'll see public safety at 21%, so that's police and fire, public works at 13%, probably due to, we haven't had a snow event yet. Everything, everybody else is kind of right in line. Community and economic development looks very low at 12%. That's because a big part of their budget is actually TIF rebate payments, so those will be coming out December and June. Debt service, again, 1%. Those payments are all done in December and June, so nothing has really happened there yet, but 17% overall. And then the last page breaks that same number down a little bit more detail for you. Rather than in those state service areas, we can report it by department, so you can see where all of our departments stand at the end of September. Again, about 25% of the way through the year, and we still have 83% of budget remaining, so hard to say we're not on track. I think if you look at each department, we're pretty, pretty well on track. And we'll, like I said, try to get these to you probably a month after the close, so our October report will come at you right away in December at the next meeting. And just, just know that it may not be a final, final report for October.
Fair enough. Questions? Greg J.
Thank you, Your Honor. Jason, I just wanted to say, I know this is something a year, year and a half ago you didn't do. Now you're doing it, I appreciate it greatly. It makes me feel very comfortable that staff is really on top of things when I see this kind of data presented. It would help me personally if in your council letter, when you present these, you added just a line somewhere that says, in your review of it, everything looks good, or in your review of it, Department ABC, it seems to be a little out of whack.
Okay.
That is, just to help me understand everything that I'm looking at.
No problem.
I appreciate the effort, I appreciate the work.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, let's entertain a motion that this remain on tomorrow night's agenda on consent.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let's take a look at the remaining consent agenda items. If any council member would like to discuss any of those, now is the time. Greg A.
Real quickly, I think it's H, better H. Leasing of detective cars. I guess my question, and again, not, not second guessing you or anything, I just, I'm curious. Why, how are these cars going to be used? Years ago, a detective car was usually a four-door whatever that detectives need to take home if they're on call to, to go out on and interview people, to go down to the county to interview people. It was, so you have a car. Wasn't a squad, wasn't a... So these two cars that were, that in the, in the pack at least were identified as detective cars, there's two, there are two full-size SUVs. So I'm just curious, are these going to be, have evidence processing stuff in them, or how are they going to be used? Chief Scott?
Thank you. They're going to be used the way they've been being used, I think, for the last decade. They will store all the detectives' equipment in it in the back, their, whether it will have evidence bags, their personal equipment, might have HEPA-filled, HEPA gowns, footwear, anything you can think of, rifles, active shooter vests, they have spike strips in there, they have, I think, some of the others.
It's more than a transportation for a detective, it's, it's a crime scene.
It's, these are two detective cars that are up for replacement.
Yeah.
Through the Vehicle Replacement Committee.
What are they replacing?
They're replacing Jeff Buckles', and they're replacing Brian Payton's.
What kind of cars?
Ford Explorer and Jeep Cherokee.
Jeep Cherokee, okay. All right, that answers it. That explains why we need the bigger cars. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg J.
Thank you, Your Honor. On that same item. This is a lease, and they're three-year leases. The one is for a little over $1,000 a month, the other one's just slightly under $1,000 a month. Three-year leases with a proposed use of up to 90,000 miles. I was curious about the existing vehicles. If one is a 2016 and one's a 2017, did we buy those new? Did we buy them used? How many miles per year are we using these vehicles? Higher mileage leases usually cost more than lower mileage leases. I'm just wondering if you really expect 30,000 miles a year on these vehicles?
Director Chat, do you have some help for us here?
I can speak to the procurement side of the transaction. I'm not sure about the mileage on the vehicles. I might defer to the chief on that.
Okay, take procurement first.
All right. First to answer your question, those, the two vehicles that are being replaced, the Explorer and the Jeep Cherokee, were purchased outright by the city back in 16 or 17. So those will be either, I think the intent is to actually keep those and put them into the pooled vehicle fleet out at Public Works for use of, around the city by various departments. Otherwise, they would be put on gov deals to be sold at auction online. As far as the lease versus buy practice goes in today's market, we feel like we're doing very good on the procurement side of these vehicles. Going through the enterprise lease program, we get the, the best government pricing available. We get a lot of, a much better selection of vehicles than what we experienced purchasing on our own, just because of their access and, and their ability to procure vehicles on, on their end. The lease price that you quoted does include the upfitting of, of the vehicles, each one about $6,000 or $7,000, if I recall. And that's all rolled into the lease price. And then at the end of the lease, so this is a little bit different than a private person leasing a vehicle. At the end of the lease, when we do dispose of these vehicles, the equity that we have built into the vehicle comes back to us to roll into the next lease or the next purchase, if that's what we decided to do. But in my discussions with the police department, I think they're very happy with the lease program. It's taken a huge administrative burden off the department. Again, access to vehicles is, we've gotten much quicker procurement times, much quicker equipping of the vehicle. It's just been a very good program for, for the police in particular.
Chief Scott, any idea on mileage?
So it's my understanding that when we are getting to the end of the lease agreement, we can choose whether or not we're going to keep the vehicle, or return the vehicle, or where it is in the mileage. So it's not a guarantee that we have to, at the end of it, turn it over. That's my understanding of how that works. So you get to the end of lease, if you have low mileage and you want to keep the car, that's my understanding.
Do we average around upper twenties or 30,000 miles a year?
I think it depends on the vehicle. I would say for one of the vehicles, yes, for the other vehicle, probably not quite that high.
Okay.
Do we have any data on how many miles were on the Jeep Cherokee? That was a vehicle that we've had for eight years?
I do not. Do you have any, Captain Champion?
If, if I were to venture a guess, I believe that car, Jeep's around 70,000. When we look at vehicle replacement cycles, every vehicle has a different mileage threshold on, on it. And as we work through vehicle replacement, we look at a couple of things, and is that accruing mileage? But that's not the only killer of our cars. So you could look at a detective vehicle that comes, and it could have very high idle mod time due to the amount of surveillance they do, and that's very hard on engines. And the one thing Enterprise has allowed us to get away from is keeping cars beyond our powertrain warranties. So as fleet customers, the large companies, Ford, GM, Nissan, they all provide us five-year $100,000 or $100,000 mile powertrain warranties. And not having a powertrain warranty on a fleet vehicle is a terrible idea for us. I can pretty much guarantee you, if you hold on to that car, you're going to end up putting an engine, a transmission, or in the case now, we're seeing hybrid battery failures in cars. And those costs are, on average, five, probably $7,000 to $8,000 for any one of those components at a time. So we do look at overall reliability, if a car's been in the shop a lot, but when we do hold on to cars too long, I hate to call, it's really just kind of a ticking, it's just a matter of when that large powertrain failure is going to occur. So we are really trying to dispose of all of our cars before the end of that powertrain warranty. There's a couple of these detective cars that we have deferred, replaced them on them. I think the Jeep maybe has been two years, because we've not had any high-dollar repairs on it, so we keep, we've extended it a few times to get a few more years of use out of it, since we do own that vehicle outright, so.
Were either of these two vehicles hybrid vehicles?
Those two were not hybrids, no.
Thank you, sir. Just as a general thing, when I came on board, there was some discussion that this lease program with Enterprise was new, and we would need three years in order to do an evaluation of it. When was that three years up, or is it up? And what kind of report should we expect as to? I understand the idea of getting out ahead of the maintenance issues. I understand the idea of having vehicles that are in working quality, but I am curious what the trade-off is in terms of how much we paid before for vehicles that lasted six, seven, eight years, to vehicles now that technically are three-year leases, although you can finagle them a little bit and keep them if you want. The dollar trade-off versus the gain in productivity, perhaps?
Yeah, I, I've been looking forward to creating and sharing that report with you. We're just now getting to the end of the first batch of leases that PD did to start out this program three years ago. So I'm working with Enterprise, we actually have a meeting with them in December, which is perfect timing for us as we, we start to work on the vehicle replacement budget, to kind of give me the data that I hope I will have and need to provide that report to you. So looking forward to giving you just that.
Is that something you're going to provide during the budget talks, or is that?
That, that would be my intention, yep.
Okay. Thank you, Your Honor.
Anything else on consent for discussion tonight? Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a comment about new vehicles, and that is, thank you for putting on the build location for those vehicles. I think it's important that with taxpayer dollars, we, to the extent possible, we purchase equipment that's assembled in the US, and both these are assembled in the US, and I appreciate putting that on the council letter. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Anything else for any consent item? All right, let's entertain a motion to approve all consent agenda items.
So moved.
Second. Give it to Lisa.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I have no items to add to tomorrow night's agenda. Does anybody else? All right, let's entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We stand adjourned. Good work, people. We'll see you tomorrow night.